Hopefully they'll join us before we get to number fourteen, Woodland Place.
Okay. Alright, you can start, John.
Okay, did you let everybody else in? Is there anybody else?
There's nobody else to let in at this point.
Okay.
And I'll keep it out. Here comes William Phillip.
Alright.
I just let him in.
Everybody froze. Everybody froze for a second. Was that just me?
Um, I think that's just you. I didn't freeze, but I don't know. I wasn't really paying attention.
Did the meeting happen? Is it over?
It's gonna go by pretty quick, except for one.
Exactly.
Hey, we ready?
We are ready, John.
Alright, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order. If you could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Do I have it the right way?
Yes, that's good.
Okay.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you.
I'm gonna do the roll call. Alright, we have, um, Member Cohen.
Present.
Member Hawk.
Here.
Member Toss. Member Phillip.
Sorry, I was muted. I'm here.
I see him. That's okay. Uh, ad hoc member, uh, Whipple.
Here.
And we do not have ad hoc member, um, Joel Shandeman at this point, and Chairman Cor- Cornelius.
I am here.
Okay.
Thank you Suzanne. Uh, there's no minutes to approve this evening. Uh, number five on the agenda was a continued public hearing of Ford Beatrix Road. That has been adjourned to another date that has not been established yet. And they will have to be re-advertized and re-noticed when that date is established.
Yes.
And the next one was a continued public hearing for JP Morgan Chase. They're requesting an adjournment to February twenty-fifth Planning Board Meeting. So that will be held on that day. Will be held on that.
There's an echo for some reason.
Somebody has two sources of output.
Dennis, he's got two computers on or something.
Yeah, but. I will tell you, at the last Planning Board Meeting, um, you had all determined that if JP Morgan Chase, uh, requested a third adjournment, you wanted it re-noticed and re-advertized. And it's in their memo that was in your packet. They agreed to do so. So they'll, we'll do that for the February meeting. I just wanted to put that into the record.
Okay, thank you. And next thing on the agenda. If there's nothing else, Suzanne.
Nope, go ahead. But William Phillip, you know, you're on twice.
That sounds like Dennis.
Um, I'm going to mute him. I don't know.
It says he's muted, so.
He's muted now.
I just muted. I just muted.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda is fourteen, Woodland Place. So who for the applicant is going to speak first?
Good evening, uh, it's Terry Rice. I'm the attorney for the applicant. Um, I don't think I need to go over the whole nine yards about the use. I will if you'd like me to. I think you probably remember exactly what this application is for. Um, as you know, it's a Shabbat shul and a residence for the rabbi. It's a small Shabbat shul. The applicant has been, uh, before the planning board many times at this point and has basically revised the plans, uh, each time there was a suggestion from, uh, the planning board or any of its consultants. So we certainly thought we were in a position to get approval tonight. Um, we have Eve's letter of January twenty-seventh. Um, that has a number of things, uh, items in it, but I think if we go through them, you can see that, uh, either they have been completed or they are relatively minor things that, uh, we hope that you could make, uh, grant an approval subject to those items, uh, being complied with to the satisfaction of the, uh, the building inspector, the planner, or whomever. Um, so I can go through that and the applicant will help me on some of these items unless you have any questions.
No, not at all, unless someone else does.
Okay. Um, okay, Ms. Russell's chip in and I think, first of all, you can describe, uh, McLean can describe number one, um, in more detail than I can because she's more familiar with that particular area on there. Um, you know, I, before we start that, I would note that as the narrative says, the new plan shows the wall fence and guardrail. Uh, you've got a lighting plan. Um, the grading on the ADA stall to the entrance was adjusted and the architect added, um, explained how the average grade was, uh, determined. Uh, so maybe we go through, uh, Eve's list.
You want me to do that?
If you would like to do number one, because I know you're very familiar with how that arrangement is in there.
Right, right. So, um, so as of now, we have three feet with eight inches going to the wall and the rest of the eighteen inches for the fence, which is six feet, six inches. And the guide rail with, which is another six inches and they should be up against each other, which gives us one foot. And then there is a plank, the guide rail plank, which is two inches. And then we have the curb right under the guide rail plank so that it doesn't take up extra room. As far as the, as the, uh, light posts go, this was intended to be in the space of the fence. So wherever there's a light post, the fence will be stopped and then the light post will take the place of the fence so that it doesn't take up extra room. So, so it looks like we're gonna fit into this area of three feet, but we could extend it. Actually, we could, um, we have another two feet to go there till the property. And, um, since, since the fence isn't, is, is, is under four feet, we, we could still go to, we could, we definitely, definitely one foot. We could definitely extend. But, but, um, the engineer mentioned that five feet here is, will not be, five feet with the dimension does not accommodate all of these proposed site improvements as shown. I'm just wondering what that was for. Does you mean that it won't accommodate it once? I mean, we're just unclear and so was my engineer. He, who, my engineer wasn't able to attend tonight. He has two other meetings. But, um, do you want us to move to, to, to add another foot? Or, um,
If I can, I can jump in if you'd like. So the five feet is not sufficient to construct all of those items. What you should do is shift the, the curb line all throughout the east side of the parking lot over a little bit to give you more room to work with. And it's, it's really not an issue if you just have it laid out properly. But as shown, it, it just doesn't work.
So I'm not sure about that. You, I, I, I'm not sure I understood that. You mean even if we do extend till the end of the property line, that's not gonna be enough?
Well, typically when you construct a fence along the property line, you typically keep it one foot off. Um, I thought the reason you shifted it a bit more was because of the trees. I thought that was the discussion we had long ago. The, in the attempt not to disturb some of the trees there. It was my understanding that's why there was a little bit of, uh, space left between the fence, between the wall rather, and the property line. But it seems to me, you know, quite easy just to shift the curb to the east and, um, give yourself sufficient room to build it properly.
So you mean?
I'd be concerned if there were breaks in the fence because the fence was part of the requirement to buffer the lights from the adjoining residential property. So if you're gonna have continual breaks in the fence every time you reach a light pole, that negates the ability of the fence to shield the lighting. So I would not recommend you doing that at all.
Mm-hmm. So I'm, I, I wasn't, I'm not really clear with what you mean. You, you, the curb, you mean the curb?
That's why your engineer should be present.
That's true. That's true. He could, he has two other meetings and he just wasn't. But I couldn't, I could just make a note of it. The curb on the, the curb on the west side should be.
Everything can be shifted, the whole block. So the, if you take the curb on the east side and shift that over and the parking stalls over and the aisle over, that will give you sufficient area on the west side to increase the five foot to a, you know, a greater dimension, maybe seven feet. But it has to be laid out properly by the engineer. I don't know what size footing that's required for your light poles. You know, it has to be designed. But you have the area to do it if it's just designed properly.
But you think there's enough room there to do it properly according to the way we want it?
Yes.
Okay, so we can fix number one.
So they can shift it over, correct.
Okay. You wanna go through your comments, please?
Sure, sure. So number two is again just engineering that the planometric plan is supposed to reflect all of the proposed site features. For some reason, the wall, the fence, the guide rail, the curbs, all of that was left off the plan and metric fence, uh, plan rather. Number three is, uh, the six-foot-high fence along the west sideline. I had one question. Um, it appears that the limit of the fence is going way up into the front yard. And I guess it's really a question for Lou. I thought that wasn't allowed. A six-foot fence was not allowed in a front yard. Um, I think the fence is only allowed to be six foot once it gets behind the front yard setback. But again, that's easily resolved through the building department unless they're seeking a variance for it.
No, no variance.
Number four is the ADA stall to the House of Assembly. I'd noted many times that ADA access has to be designed properly. And it, uh, shows a one-on-twelve grade, which is great, but now it needs handrails and landing areas. So that still remains to be designed properly. Number five is regarding the spot elevations. So the architect did provide a calculation indicating spot elevations, which was utilized to determine the building height. The spot elevations on the architectural calculation don't seem to jive with the grading on the engineering plan. So to enable us to review it properly, all of the spot elevations that are being utilized for determination of building height should be shown on the grading plan. Once that's shown, then the height can be confirmed. And, um, is Annis Lou on the call with us?
Yeah, I'm gonna unmute him.
Okay, well, when, yeah, he can, he can, I'm sure, provide his opinion when I'm done with this.
Um, If I can just interrupt for a second. This seems to be like a, um, almost, uh, uh, universal problem when it comes to site plans and architecturals when it, with regard to spot elevations. They always see, it always seems to come up that, that they don't jive. Is there a reason for that? Or is there a way to?
Well, the architect has to.
Guidance.
Engineer and the engineer has to talk to the architect. It's just a matter of coordination.
Yeah, if I may, uh, the applicant spoke to both the engineer and, and the architect. They believe that they, um, are correct. Um, but, you know, we can get you some more spot elevations just so you can confirm that.
Well, there aren't, that the elevations, as I said, provided by the architect are not on the, and on the grading plan. So it'd be great if they were correct, but they have to be demonstrated. Um, number six is more spot elevations. The front walk is graded at twenty-five percent grade. So it should be shown that it actually is a feasible walk. Uh, typically, again, spot elevations, steps would be added. Number seven is regarding the driveway. There's a note there. Proposed gutter to prevent runoff from running down driveway. Again, spot elevations are the way you would demonstrate that. So on the driveway at the property line, there should be a spot elevation showing that that grade is higher than the gutter line to make sure the stormwater from Woodland Place doesn't flow down their driveway and create a problem for them. Uh, number eight, stormwater management. There is a proposed system in the rear of the yard. It's three seepage pit underground system. The detail shows there's open grates, but the grading doesn't reflect the water is being directed into them. So that's just a question for the engineer. Do they really need open grates? Because over time, the open grates cause the seepage pits to get clogged and it becomes a big maintenance issue for the property owner.
Yeah, my, my understanding is they're not gonna need those.
Okay, good. Maintenance agreement is required. We know that. Propulation tests are required. We know that.
They were done, they were done, Eve, and, and provided.
Okay, so that's good. So that'll be in the file because those are usually done at time of construction when they have equipment out there. Um, number eleven is the lighting plan. The lighting plan is way too high for residential zone.
Yeah, uh, Lee, Eve, I just wanna touch on that too because that's pretty much what my, uh, memo also highlighted. And one thing, um, I just wanna note that we've been raising this lighting, I've been raising the lighting issue now since like the first, um, memorandum. So I think this is something that the applicant really should take a look at. Um, not only do I think it doesn't meet the code, but I also have concerns with the overall lighting. And I think it could probably be reduced, especially in considering that it's in that residential neighborhood.
Yeah, they're, they're gonna reduce it. They'll take care of that.
Yeah, the, the light, the lighting plan proposed is more for a commercial parking lot.
Yeah.
Of poles and the intensity. And it is definitely not something that we would wanna see in a residential neighborhood. It's.
Absolutely.
And, and the applicant probably doesn't wanna see it either. They're gonna be living there. They don't need to pay for all that lighting.
So no, it's, it's not an issue. They're gonna do that.
We don't need the lights at all. I mean, what, we just added, we just had, had our guy just added, just on, on your request. So what, so what do we need? Do we not want us to have?
Design a lighting plan that's consistent with the village code. It's all spelled out there.
Right, and I think you also take a look at, take a look at how many lighting poles you actually have in your parking lot. I mean, you have a tremendous, there is a tremendous amount of those and I don't think you're gonna need that many within the parking lot itself.
Alright, so you're gonna have some building-mounted lights that should be sufficient to illuminate the walkway. You'll probably need maybe one by the handicap stalls and maybe one in the back. I, I don't foresee that. I think you have five or six light poles on this property in addition to the building-mounted lights, which is, you know, as I said, way excessive. So the, whoever designed the lighting, maybe can reevaluate that for you.
And do we know the lumens?
Yes, it's excessive. There was a detailed plan. A professional prepared the plan. They did the spot intensities and they did follow proper design protocol, only they designed it for more of a commercial setting rather than a residential setting.
Yeah, well, that's, that's fine. As I said, they're, they'll, they'll reduce it. They, they're not too enthusiastic about it either, so.
Right, so then, and then along with that, even with the revised lighting plan in the lower levels of lighting that will be provided, there should be consideration of especially in the rear parking lot that maybe the lights are just turned off completely. And you just have in the evening hours after everyone has gone home, maybe you just have residential.
We're not gonna put on the, the lights in the parking lot. We're not using this parking lot. We're just, it's gonna serve as, I don't know, it just, maybe our kids are gonna ride their bikes there. We're not using this parking lot because we're gonna use this. This is only, only gonna be used on Shabbos when no driving is allowed. So it's probably gonna be off. Whenever services are happening, it's probably gonna be, the, the lights are just not gonna be on.
Right, and I, we understand. I think you just, we're highlighting that you probably won't even want that much lighting. So just take a look.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there's no.
I just thought that this is, I mean, our lot, our professional did this for us. I thought that this is what the code asked, you know, add, demands us to do, but, um, I'm totally fine with getting rid of these lights. I'm, we're not even planning on using them anyway. Right, I mean, I think there are.
You can't eliminate them entirely. There is a code that requires to have some lighting to a much, uh, less degree than you have right now.
Right.
Okay.
The zoning code itself and the, uh, site plan development chapter in the local code has maxims. And we're suggesting you definitely wanna go on the lower end.
Okay, so what you're saying is that they basically went with the maximum?
And, yeah, and they actually exceeded the maximum, so.
They did the code for residential property.
Hmm, okay, okay. So we're gonna have them do, adjust that. It's not an R end at all.
Uh, number sixteen is regarding, oh, what did I do? Landscape. We did fifteen is, um, limit of disturbance. That was mentioned before.
And he showed.
That, that is, that is shown on the map.
I see one label on the, on the west side of the property, but I don't see the other side of it. The limit of disturbance is of, of an enclosed shape. So you see the full limit.
Okay, so you have it on four of the site plan.
Hello?
Hello.
Hello?
I think, I think Suzanne's, uh, having problems.
Yeah, she looks frozen.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm looking at, I'm looking at my letter. I'm not looking at the screen right now. Um, I'll just continue then.
So on, on, on page four, we have, um, the, how, what's this called? The, the silt fence.
Before we go on, um, I'm not sure how Zoom works. If, if Suzanne is the master, uh, and she's not on, is it?
I'm here. I don't know what happened.
Okay.
I like blinked out and I'm, but I'm back. Sorry. Okay. Alright, so anyway, we're talking about limit of disturbance. It needs to be marked on the plan. Yes, I do see the silt fence. That's a different item. Silk fence, the silk fence is shown on the plan.
But our, he, he notes that this is the, this is the limit of disturbance. This serves as, this is what my engineer.
As I said, I see the limit of disturbance is shown on the west side. I don't see where it is on the, on the north, or I don't see where it is on the east. But anyway. The contractor won't be able to see the, um, trees to remain, um, those are marked. And I was just wondering if it was the intent to save, you're adding two new trees in the front. That's wonderful. But I noticed that there's a maple there that's showing, uh, utilities going right through it. So was it, is it your intent to remove that maple or to save the maple? That's right in the front of the house.
Right, we're gonna save it. We're gonna save it.
If you look at the plan, it says that the, uh, sprinkler system and the water line is going right through the maple.
You're gonna go around the maple?
Yeah.
Like, that's the question. If they wanna save it, it should, the lines should be relocated. If they weren't gonna save it, then it should have an X over it to show it's being removed.
Okay, so we're gonna relocate the lines.
Okay, so you wanna save your maple. That's great. I like that. Um, erosion control is just a statement for number seventeen. Number eighteen, we had a full discussion about this last time, but the plan wasn't changed. It's still showing the old parking calculation.
Yeah, I, I, I think you're wrong on that, Eve. I mean, we, we've had this going back and forth. And I think nine was the number of spaces that was determined by the building inspector to be applicable.
Yeah, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the calculation that's shown on the plan. I'm not talking about the number. I agree with the number. But the way the calculation is shown on the cell internal plan, he's still talking about something else. He's not, he's not using the calculation for the, um, that we use of the fifteen square feet.
Okay, no, I get it. We'll, we'll have.
But I mean, yeah, I agree with the number. There's no problem there. We all, we, that's a resolved issue.
Okay.
Um, and then number, what am I up to? Eighteen, nineteen is just details. Full-depth pavement is required within the right of way of Woodland to have. So essentially, it's, it's with the exception of the lighting, uh, which is, I redesigned all the other things or items that we've been talking about for many, many months that still haven't been addressed.
I don't remember seeing anything about number nineteen and the spot elevations for the front walk. And it happens to be, we, we do have steps in the front walk. There is a line marking. There is a line for some steps.
Okay, well, then, then that should be shown clearly because I don't see any, I see one elevation. I see five fifty-three point four, and that's it.
Okay, but we haven't seen it, but I, I don't think we, this, this was addressed in the past. I, this, this commented, this, this is new toss.
And so. Request for grading and spot elevations and ADA access have been ongoing for many months.
ADA access is correct. That I remember. And we did, we did, and, and it was mentioned that we need to, we need to, to be less.
Proposed spot elevations. They've been out there for months. And that, that concludes my report.
Thanks. Um, Eve, any concern about, um, an area for snow removal?
Oh, there's plenty of room to.
Snow storage?
No, there's plenty of room on the site.
Okay, and.
To the back, they can push it off to the, to the east.
And what about, uh, uh, an area for, uh, garbage, uh, um, storage?
Well, it's residential. I'm assuming they'll keep their trash cans inside like everyone else and pull them out on trash day. But I mean, the applicant can explain how they're gonna handle their trash.
Yeah, we discussed this in the past. We're just gonna do residential.
They, we certainly don't wanna have a big trash dumpster in a residential zone.
No, we, we don't want that either.
No.
Just asking.
I don't know if Lou's around. Lou, if you wanna weigh in on the height issue? I'm, I'm asking him to unmute. Oh, I don't see him. I don't even see him. No, he's on here, but it's muted.
Yeah.
Where are you? There he is, building inspector. I see.
Yeah, everybody was sick of looking at my ceiling, so.
Do you have, yeah, do you have enough information to determine height? Because I, I wasn't able to, but that's really your purview.
I wasn't either. And the page of calculations that he gave was, uh, to say the least, thoroughly confusing. I couldn't establish where I was supposed to go from where to what. So that was one issue. I still don't have an accurate height on the building. Uh, we also still don't have a, any sort of details on the sprinkler system that's gonna be used. I know we had a letter from the fire department about that. And the issue with the fence is, is actually true. They can't have a six-foot fence going all the way to the property line. They can't go forward to the front line of the house.
So, so that's easy enough to resolve, so.
Yep. It, it will, it seems like, uh, the exact provisions for the, uh, sprinkler system are really a building permit issue rather than a site plan issue.
Yeah, the only reason I'm bringing it up is because the fire department asked to see some sort of preliminary drawings prior to issuing an approval.
Well, I mean, the, the applicant's committed to providing a sprinkler system and they'll have it designed and so forth when they come in for a building permit.
You got it.
I think that makes the most sense.
We can make it a condition of approval.
And they, they do.
I have no objection to that.
They do show that there's a proposed sprinkler line coming in from Woodland, Lou.
Yeah, I know. That's all I have.
Okay, so it looks like we're still concerned about the structure height and the lighting. And I don't know, um, is anything else out there? Valerie, you said that was your concern as well?
Yeah, that was my biggest concern was the lighting.
Okay.
Yep, that's what she had.
And the gaps in the fence and the, um, lack of, um, consistency between, um, the spot elevations, uh, with the site plan and the, uh, architecturals.
Correct. Well, that's gonna tie into the, the, uh, measurement of height. That's why it becomes very critical.
Have they been to, um, CDRC yet? Not CDRC, uh.
Yes.
Architectural?
Yes, yes. There's two memos in there. They went December. They asked for some more information. They provided it. And everything was, um, recommended as an approval to the planning board on, uh, January nineteenth.
Yep, that's correct. Okay. Anything else from any of the board members?
I had a question.
Okay, what is it?
And so you mentioned before that the fence can't be six feet. I, so I just wanted to know from what point it could, since that fence got tired, from what point can it get to six feet?
Behind the front line of the house.
Behind the front line of the house?
Correct, yes.
Up until then? Behind, sort of behind the front line, you said. Okay, then another question, okay, thank you for that. Will.
Can they, can they go below six feet?
Yeah, I believe it's three foot is, is forward to that, but then twenty feet from the road. Well, I think it's twenty feet from the road, I could check the code. There can't be any obstruction, visual obstruction with the fence. So it would have to be a chain link or something you could see through, so it doesn't block the view on the driveway.
Okay. Now, another, this was just a question that I had, if, regarding the guide rail, is there a possibility for us to make it just in the parking lot? Or do we need it, or do we need it throughout the driveway? Just because it's, you know, just for the aesthetics, I was just wondering if we need it throughout, along the whole entire driveway or parking lot will be enough?
Well, wherever you have a drop-off, where you have, and you only have a twelve-foot wide driveway, so the vehicles are going to be traveling immediately adjacent to the edge of the drop-off. In some areas, it, it goes, it varies from two feet in the front of the house and increases as it goes back to four feet. By the time you reach your, like, in the area where the handicap stalls are, the wall is already four feet tall. That continues back, and then at the end of the parking lot, roughly the midpoint, the wall is up at six feet. So I would strongly recommend a guide rail be put in just for safety purposes of the people traveling along not only the driveway, but for the potential of a car going over this wall onto the neighbor's property. But it doesn't have to be a highway-type guide rail, it could be, you know, a wooden beam guide rail that's designed to blend in with the natural setting.
Is it enough if we start from the front line of the, of the building?
Yes.
Would that be enough?
Yes, that would be fine.
Are there bollards that could be sufficient to accomplish the same goal?
Bollards would accomplish the same goal, but personally, I think they would be, they would look, you know, terrible. Because you're, really, you'd have to install them approximately six feet on center along the full length of the, of the west curb line. So you'd have bollards, you'd have fence, you'd have light poles, it would really start looking quite messy. But yes, bollards is another means of protecting someone from going over the wall.
Okay, we're trying to get the option.
I think the wooden guide rail would be less intrusive and more in keeping with the residential look.
Right, and I, I mean, this is, this is our ultimate goal, so, yeah, I, I guess if we can start from the front line of the, of the building, that helps.
Anything else from the planning board members? Any questions before we open it to the public?
Nothing from me, thanks.
All right, so I'm going to open the public hearing for fourteen Woodland Place.
A second.
Thank you, Dennis, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Anyone here from the public, Suzanne?
The building inspector's raising his hand.
He is?
Yes, go ahead, Lo.
Actually, I didn't raise my hand, I don't know how that.
Okay. All right. I don't have anyone saying anything in the chat. I don't have anyone raising their hand, I don't know who, Rob and Kowski and CTR, but if they want to say anything, they could either type in the chat or raise their hand, please.
Hi, this is Rob, I, I'm just listening, I have no, I, I, I'm actually listening because we're gonna be appearing in front of the board next month, and I just wanted to listen in.
Okay.
That's not, that's not fair.
I'm at home, I have nothing else to do, so I might as well listen in, so.
Okay. So I don't think we have any comments from the public at this point.
Okay. Uh, before we close the public hearing, is.
Well, before you do that, I wouldn't recommend closing, I would recommend continuing because the information that they're going to be providing will have to be part of the public record. And if you close it, you're not supposed to accept new information.
Okay.
Terry, do you disagree?
No, as much as I'd like to have the public hearing closed and get an approval, I, if there's gonna be, and it has to be, has to be continued.
And I would be happy to, I wish I could oblige.
So I guess we're gonna have the applicant come back again, is what I'm hearing, after these issues are addressed.
Yeah, but I'm actually optimistic. I'm, I'm opti- optimistic about February, I'll leave it at that.
Pretty much technical things, it was just Solentano can take care of, so hopefully.
Okay, yeah. I just want, go ahead, Bayla, I'm sorry.
For us to get an approval contingent on all these corrections being made, since they're all just, you know, things that could easily be.
Uh, I thought about it during the meeting. And I, I personally would love to be able to say yes, but I, it just seems that there are too many open issues which either haven't been explained, haven't been provided, have to be redesigned. And really, the entity that makes the decision is the planning board, not the professionals to the planning board. And it would be putting the professionals in the, on the planning board, not on the planning board, representing the planning board almost in a position of making decisions. Like, this is enough light, this is too much light, we don't like this fence, et cetera.
Okay, then I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing on the twenty-fifth of February?
At?
At.
Seven thirty PM via Zoom unless all restrictions are lifted.
Yeah, good luck with that.
Okay.
Okay, just, just so you all know, that's.
We know.
Long night.
Well, here's the thing, they know what they have to do, if they come in and everything is done, it should be pretty straightforward, right?
Right.
Let me, let me ask you.
It would be helpful, it would be helpful if the plans were submitted a little bit earlier, so, you know, we'd have the, we'd have the opportunity to look at them sooner.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that if for some reason you get the plans in sooner, I'm happy to do a review. And if for some reason something still needs to be tweaked between then and the meeting, you know, that gives the applicant a chance to tweak those.
Oh, that's helpful, that's helpful, I didn't know that was an option.
You can always submit early.
You can always submit early.
It's the deadline that everybody goes by and.
Have you ever seen an engineer submit something early?
No, but we just offer, no.
Okay.
Well, I mean.
Yeah, I, I don't think we should be bad-mouthing.
We're not, we're not bad mouthing anybody.
No, what I'm saying is, we're not greater than either.
Could we submit it twice? I mean, if we submit it and then we have corrections, because we just resubmit, is that an option?
Yes.
Yeah.
They'll tell you it's wrong and resubmit, then you're done. Good. All right, I hate a motion, does someone second it?
Yes, I will.
Russ, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None?
Thank you, good night, everybody.
Good night, thank you.
See you next month.
All right, planning board, I still need you.
Yes, we have new business.
Yes, um, some of you might not have seen, it, it was something that was sent late in the day because Dan and I had spoken, something came in when I was out. My mail hadn't been opened, and it's a notice of intent to be lead agency from the town of Ramapo for a application that we've gotten quite a bit of questions on, and I had never received anything. Dan could probably say more to this, because he did speak with the town of Ramapo directly. But we need to get a motion or discussion with the planning board to have the village planner Valerie respond on behalf of the planning board. And unfortunately, she's got a tight timeframe due to the fact that I was out for so long being sick.
I'm glad you're back.
Thank you, so am I.
Yes.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, um, I'm gonna put aside the fact that the town attorney, not the town attorney, the planning board attorney, when I spoke to her prior to the meeting that shouldn't have taken place in the first instance, promised me that the board would take absolutely no action and not take any public comment because the town violated the general municipal law by failing to provide notice as well as the relevant application materials for a very, very, very large, I don't know how else you could describe a fifty-five thousand square foot anything. The plus or minus on my square footage. And I also was dealing with the borough attorney for Upper Saddle River. And the town finally acquiesced and sent not only us, but the county and other involved agencies and municipalities copies of the application materials, the site plan, EAF, et cetera. Suzanne, did they send it to the borough as well?
Yes, they, they sent it to, I have it in front of me, the Borough of Upper Saddle River, Suez, Rockland County Drainage Authority, I don't know what Hardesty in Hanover is, I have no idea. And the Rockland County Planning Department. When Dan and I were getting calls when they had their meeting December twenty-first, I did have a conversation with Arlene Miller, and they had not received any information to do with GML at that point. Which is why Dan then spoke to the town attorney.
Yes, and the borough attorney.
And the borough attorney, because apparently some.
Supervisor's office and whoever else.
The neighbors received a notice, but not all of the neighbors and none of the adjacent municipalities received anything. And down the pike, there will be another application that you will become.
Did we mention the address? Did we mention the address?
It's seventy-seven, seventy-nine, and eighty-five Hillside Avenue. For those of you that may not be familiar, one side of the street is Town of Ramapo Unincorporated at some point, and then Upper Saddle River comes in, and on the other side, it is the Village of Ayrmont. And there will be a pending application coming down the line, that's on our side of the street.
Okay, so unfortunately, I'll be kind. Unlike normal municipalities like the Village of Ayrmont, when we get applications that affect adjoining municipalities, Suzanne is on top of it and sends them all the required information, and they have an opportunity to respond. The adjoining municipality permitting agency, whatever the case may be. So our involvement is that we're within the five-hundred-foot limit under the general municipal law. I'm not going to get into the nitty-gritty of the, how shall we put this kindly? Full pause that they have already made. But based on when Suzanne was able to get a copy of this, we have a very, very limited time, I think it's February sixth?
Correct, thirty days from January sixth.
Okay. That's just for lead agency. You realize that, right? That's all it's for, it's just saying that those, it's. It's, it's, it's intent to be lead agency.
I think they already declared themselves lead agency.
No, it says, the, the letter is, the planning board hereby declares its intent to be lead agency irrespective of the proposed action unless written objections received from you within thirty calendar days of the date mailing of the certification, the planning board will assume the role of lead agency. And that's when the date was January sixth, twenty-twenty-one. So all this is right now is just for, they're declaring themselves lead agency. We don't, we, we can't possibly object to that because we, we don't have any approvals associated with this.
But my understanding, Dan, was I listened to the video that they sent us from the meeting, was that they were looking for a referral to go to zoning for their variances as soon as this was done, unless I misunderstood that.
Well, I didn't listen to it, but I, I was told when I called a few weeks ago that that was, you know, they tried saying, oh, what's the big deal, we're just going for a referral to the ZBA. But Valerie, when do you think it would be proper for the planning board through you to actually comment on any concerns that we might have? Any objections that we might have? I mean, my, my personal, like, my personal concern is they didn't even notify us in the first place. They had to be forced to notify us. So I don't want to put the village in a position of, oh, right now, all they're asking for is if we're objecting to them being lead agent only to find out that we say, no, we have no objection to them being lead agent and never receiving anything in the future to comment on. Or them being able to say, well, we sent you everything and you never responded. So that's what my concern is. If we were dealing with a municipality which had a good track record of being a good neighbor, that's one thing. From my experience, this is the first time that I can recall Ramapo ever referring anything that they needed to refer to the village and they only did so very I'll be kind reluctantly. So I don't, I don't want to be in a position where they can come back at us and say, hey, we sent you everything and you didn't object.
Right, so we're not, well, the objection, the objection right now would be lead agency objection. And if we're objecting to lead agency, we would have to say that we want to be lead agency, right? So that's, that's not that's not possible at this point. But what we can do is submit a letter stating that we do have concerns and that as part of the seeker process, we want them to take a look at, and then we can list the specific concerns that we have associated with the project.
Okay, I like-
And that's something that we can, that's something we can put forward. Now, they have their planning board meetings. It looks like the next one is February ninth and then the one after that is February twenty-third. So we could, I could potentially try to pull something together and we have a CDRC meeting, right, on the, is it the ninth?
The ninth, and we only have one application, so we-
So maybe at the CDRC meeting, at least the technical team can kind of sit down and kind of review maybe some of the issues we want to bring up. There, in the packet, they do have the site plans and I'll, and I'll send them over to Eve. They're very, very difficult to read, so we might want to request additional copies of the site plans from them. But at least Eve and I could probably start pulling together some concerns that we have or things that we want them to definitely take a look at associated with this project.
Okay, I did send it to Eve and Lou under separate cover, just so you know, so that they-
I did, I did take a look at it. And I had a very basic question. Is, isn't this a commercial development if it's for profit? In a residential zone, like how does this even get built?
I haven't even looked at, right, it's a good question because I haven't looked at the zone, but it's not residential district.
I think, don't quote me if I'm wrong, but I believe it has to do with the Town of Ramapo code and I think it might be a special permit in their code.
Okay, yeah, I'm not familiar with that. I haven't, since I just received it, I looked at it and I said, this is a business-
It could still be a special permit and a commercial use.
Yeah.
What is the proposed use?
The community mikva. The neighborhood mikva. For, I don't know, what did it say, fifty some odd?
Fifty-three, I think. Fifty-three, fifty-five people?
Yes.
Well, changing rooms, and then they give you a whole narrative on how many people they anticipate and it's hundreds of people.
And this is for profit, they're going to charge?
I-
Yeah, they charge people.
There's an application that we're working on and I know one of the issues was the water source, so I think this one might be doing something with Chestnut Ridge to get into Suez.
They said they were extending the main. I looked at that right away because how are you going to have a mikva without water?
Do we, do we have any idea? Do we have any idea, even approximate, about how far away the former Mishkana, La Vieira, Yeshiva property is located from this?
I'd have to look at the map. I don't know offhand, but-
I don't know how many feet.
Down by the cemetery. That was closer to the cemetery, correct?
Correct, but this is directly across the street and I guess you could say Catty Quarter angled to propose-
So is it on the opposite side of the street of?
It's the opposite side of the Skill Building that's going to CDRC.
I'm not talking Skill Building. I'm talking about the village was sued.
Yes, it's the opposite side because that's further down and in the back, the forty-four hillside that you're referred to.
Right, forty-four is now connected to the cemetery.
From, from Saddle River Road going, I guess, what is that, west? Going up, that's Town of Ramapo Unincorporated, and then when you hit like Oretam Road on the left-hand side and you go to, to West Saddle River Road, then it becomes, that portion is Upper Saddle River.
Saddle River, right. Yeah, you have three jurisdictions as you travel along Hillside Ave.
Correct. And then another issue, that bridge is closed. I don't know if you're all aware of that. The bridge is, I think, part of Upper Saddle River and there's an issue with the tonnage. And now that road is blocked off, so anyone that lives in there, depending on where they are, either can only access from Saddle River Road or they have to go all the way around to the other side to the other side of Saddle River Road.
Well, on top of it, as I recall, when the Yeshiva was considering their plans, one of the main concerns was the width of that road and that there were a number of houses that actually basically had the front of their house located within the right-of-way. And on top of it, I spoke with Paul Baum who may be representing an applicant who wishes to put in or develop a new cemetery where the Yeshiva was going to be. So I think one of the major concerns is you're going to potentially have two cemeteries, a public mikva all on a road that is I'll call it substandard.
And it's potential school with buses.
Where's that?
Right across the street from the mikva. At one hundred Hillside and ninety-nine Oretam.
The Skill Building.
Oh, the Skill Building, sorry.
That's the Skill Building.
That's this, they're literally across the street. Little bit up.
If I remember correctly, there was also an issue with the site distance on that road because of the hills.
Well, they had the issue, Skill Building had the issue with both site distance and water. Plus traffic and the water. So this mikva is from the narrative that I read, bringing in a water main. So that would work towards solving one of the problems for the Skill Building.
Right, and I think they, that not having a hydrant close enough was another issue with the fire department, if I recall. But they could be able, if there's a water main put in, they probably could put one-
That solves a lot of their problems.
Right.
So the issue with traffic and the narrow road and the inability to widen it because as Dan noted, there may not be right-of-way available. And the load restriction on that bridge causing it to be closed, you know, those are all items we need to put in our letter. When, you know, when Al drafts it up, those would be some of the critical questions that we have.
Right, and I was also going to add in about like community character and and they, it says it's, it's in conformance with their comprehensive plan, so I was going to take a look to actually see if-
Right, yeah, that's what I, I read that, but I, I guess my plan has changed.
I was just like, I don't know if I would throw that in as-
Ramapo's comprehensive plan?
A large, a small building to be consistent-
Ramapo hasn't updated their Ramapo took a piecemeal approach to the update of their comprehensive plan, if I'm not mistaken. And I don't think they've looked at this area.
Well, and they probably didn't say, recommend putting large community mikvas in the middle of a residential, the R fifty district.
Yeah, but I don't even think they looked at this area at all.
I'm sure they didn't, that's what I'm saying. So I'm going to look in the comprehensive plan to see if it, you know. Because they said it's supported in the comprehensive plan.
Just one thing I noticed, you mentioned the water. I'm looking at the letter regarding the water main extension. And water main extension is coming from Saddle River Road from Pine Brook. And it would go midway to the property line of the mikva, so I don't think that would supply this other building near Oretam.
Well, it would be that much closer because before they were hundreds of feet away. Now they'll-
It would be closer, but this letter is basically stating that because it's a dead leg, they would have to commit essentially, if I understand this correctly, to seven thousand gallons a day. Otherwise, Suez isn't going to put it in. And I guess one thing I'm curious about is for a mikva, they can't use a hundred percent public water. Some of it has to be natural. I don't know if it's rainwater, but I'm- They have sister and say mention they were- But it's, it's a certain percentage of it has to be the rainwater. So I, I don't know, I don't, it's, it's, it'd be interesting to hear more about it.
Would it help if I request information, like PDFs of the plans?
That would be great if you could do that.
Yeah. So you want the full submission?
Yeah, what happened, what was forwarded to me, I didn't have the ability to enlarge, so whatever format it was in, it was very difficult to read.
I got an eight and a half by eleven and I just put it in our scanner and scanned it.
Yeah, because I was trying to enlarge it and print for the next-
But I'll ask for actual PDFs that you can open and enlarge or would do whatever you need to do with them, and if you need to print them, you could do so.
That'd be great.
Does the planning board want to see that as well?
Yes, please.
I would be interested.
Hold on.
I don't know the process, that's why I went-
Well, I'm going to go with I'm going to be optimistic. Although it's not my nature. That with what Valerie is suggesting, that it will cover our initial concerns and that we want to be continually updated as to any changes and reserve the right to receive additional information. But I could just tell you based on my experience and I'm sure Valerie and Eve have had different experiences because different municipalities work different ways. But from my experience, what usually happens is on a referral such as this, it's referred to the village slash town planner. The village slash town, town planner puts together a memo with recommendations to the planning board. And then the planning board discusses the memo from the planner and ultimately those are resolution that typically adopts the town planner's suggestions. And sometimes it's just for local determination and that's it. And when I first heard about this today, I I'm not going to say panicked, but my concern was we only have until the sixth, but now I'm hearing the ninth. And that this might be our only opportunity. And I recommended to Suzanne, to Suzanne to, A, put it under new discussion, B, get everything to Valerie. And to have the planning board authorize Valerie to put together her concerns and on behalf of the planning board, send it to the Town of Ramapo because we're not going to be meeting in time for that next meeting. But I'm comfortable with how Valerie has threaded the needle. So if she just comes up with general concerns and keep, you know, comments such as please keep us surprised that if anything new is submitted, please provide it to us. Even, you know, where is it in your comprehensive plan that you believe that this use is in accordance with that comprehensive plan?
So I guess we need a motion to make this authorization?
No. Not, not based on what Valerie's saying.
No, okay.
I mean, can't hurt. Just authorize the village planner to put together a response to the submittal of the Town of Ramapo with regard to the proposed mikva, public mikva. And to report back anything she might receive from Town of Ramapo.
Sounds like a good motion.
Not my best.
You did pretty good, Dan.
Thanks.
You showed some practice.
So I'll make that the motion.
Okay. Need a second? Russell Hox, okay?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Yeah, I guess, you know, talking about traffic, don't forget, we got that school at the Camp Regash. You know, I don't know if you can look at applications together versus separately when you're talking about traffic on that road?
No. Cumulative impact is definitely a important feature of seeker.
Yes, yes.
Are those other pending applications right now or?
The Skill Building contacted me in December. They were going to submit for either January or February, but they didn't make it, so.
What do they want to do there?
It's, they're going to put a school and I believe it was initially one hundred persons. I can resend everybody the minutes if they want to look from CDRC, but I think it's now increased and they had to decide what accessory things they were going to keep or not keep. Because they have like, there's a swimming pool, there's a tennis court, and then if they were going to-
There's a chicken coop?
Yeah, chicken coop. You were there. You all did the site business. You and Eve. I think Adriana went, Valerie. You weren't there yet. But they had a number of things. Just as an FYI, I'll send you all this, the last CDRC minute when they were here.
There was a tree grow, there was a tree growing through the roof of a shed. I've never seen that before. That was pretty cool.
And I think it was three parcels and then they decided to use two, or they were trying to figure out what they were going to do. Because it's ninety-eight, one hundred, Hillside, and then ninety-nine Oretam, and I think the rabbi is going to is living in ninety-nine Oretam, and they had to make the decision on what they were going to do, either merge the lots or-
I think he was, I think he was, I think he decided to get rid of his brother-in-law living in the single-family house.
I think, yeah, that's it. It sounds familiar now that you say that. Yeah, I'll pull that out and as an FYI, just because it'll be coming down the pike eventually to planning anyway. This way you could see what's transpired thus far. They seem to come like once a year. They've, they've been to CDRC, I think, three times now. Or maybe four. It's been going on since sixteen or seventeen, but the water's been the main issue.
Water and, and access.
S, access, yes. That's correct. I think that's why they changed it to be from Hillside Ave and they would have to have the buses come from Saddle River Road. S- access, yes. That's correct. I think that's why they changed it to be from uh Hillside Ave and they would have to have the buses come from Saddle River Road.
And Valerie's report to uh Ramapo County strongly recommend that the traffic study be done.
Okay.
Assuming full development of the. Passes in the area.
Yep.
Okay.
And that would include the uh Camp Regish proposal.
Well, looking at their EAF form, I thought it was kinda interesting that the question eight, I think it was for traffic, they said no. You know, they're having like, I don't know. Between the appointments and the number of people per day, it seemed kinda ridiculous that they would say there'd be no, so you know, impact to traffic.
And don't forget, it's just not the school at Camp, the old Camp Regash. They have other future plans too.
Yeah, but I'm talking about this Mifah.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Was there a document here that implied that the Mikva was for profit? Did I hear that correctly? They have to page that that's on?
I didn't pick that up, but I didn't.
Well, someone said it was commercial.
Unusual. It's unusual that a Mikva is commercial. Almost all Mikvas are organization-based nonprofits. I don't know of one that's actually.
Is it, hold on, is it usual for a? Non-commercial Vikva, Mikva to have hundreds of people?
It depends on its location. So he- here's, here's a, here's a, here's a possibility. Because just same, same as on Friday night and Saturday, we don't drive to synagogue. We all, the, the women who need the Mikva at night on Friday night can't drive to the Mikva either. That means they have to kind of walk there uh typically. So it's possible, I mean, it's it's. But this way, statistically, if you understand that a woman. Well, I'm trying, I'm trying to put it into a uh a quantitative. For for let's say every hundred families, pick a number, every hundred families that live in a Jewish community. Each one has a wife that needs the Mikva once a month, right? Let's just assume that those numbers, a hundred women will use it during. But on any given day of that month, you only have three percent, three women who use it, right? Three times thirty is ninety. So you have roughly three point one percent of the community that needs to mix on every given night, right? So even if you had a thousand p- uh uh families living in the community. And there were a thousand women who would need to use a Mikva once a month. But divide that by thirty and you get thirty women on the average night need to use the Mikva, not hundreds. The numbers don't seem to to add up. Am I, what is saying understood by the audience?
I think they said forty to forty-five.
There, there's a narrative that was provided that explains all the numbers. They were comparing it to another existing Mikva. They, if you uh read the documents submitted, it's all in the narrative.
All right, I'll look some more closely, but at fifty-five.
It it does say uh commercial though?
Well, it says it's a community Mikva. And typically what I've been familiar with is if a Mikva is not. Is typically attached to the house of worship. And at that time, then it's, it's part of that um congregation. But if it's a community Mikva, anyone can go there and there's generally a fee.
The fee is really just the upkeep. The fee isn't for profitability.
The owner, right, the owner, the applicant and owner.
Could couldn't, couldn't anyone? Couldn't anyone make that argument?
About what?
When they charge a fee?
Well, there's a cost of construction and there's a cost of maintenance and upkeep. So let's, I'm just speaking from experience here, right? So I've done this.
No, no, Joel, I'm I'm not, I'm not challenging you. I'm just interested in. How you, not you personally, how one would distinguish. Between a commercial operation and a. Not-for-profit, I'm just covering my cost operation.
So the organization that's filing the.
Cause I would love to be able to make that argument in my law office in a small month.
So if if it's a real non-for-profit, they should have some federal documents stating that they are a non-for-profit. And that everything they're doing is under the heading of that not-for-profit. Would that be correct?
Yes, at the very least, yes.
Can we ascertain whether in fact that's the case?
It just says name of project and the owner is Hillside Mikva.
There's no.
What do we call? The five oh one organization? I'm not sure if I'm I'm saying the.
Five oh one C three.
Five oh one C organization. They should provide a a uh cer- a certification. I don't know if it needs to be notarized or not. That in fact they are one and that would. That should answer that question. If they can't produce that, then I may have to agree. It seems like it could be for profit. But it's very unusual. I would say of the ones that I know, I don't know any that are for profit, to tell you the truth.
Do you know any that are this large?
The one, well, I didn't see this. On Viola Road is pro- probably the prime example of what a large Mikva is. And they, they service uh the Concord area, the Forché area, the Wesley Hills area, the uh Pomona. But the the critical part, I mean, during the week, you could have, again. If you had a thousand women, right, that that need a Mikva on a monthly basis, typically, only, only. Three percent, right, one thirtieth require it on any given night of the month. Some of those nights happen to be Friday night, so four thirtieth. Of those nights are Friday nights where they can't drive to the Mikva. They have to walk to the Mikva. But let's just look at the numbers, you know, just from that perspective. Three percent of the average population, actually, so let's, uh yeah, three percent on any given night of the, of the, of the. Family population requires the Mikva. It's not that much. On Viola Road, if they're servicing a thousand families. So a thousand families would say, what's three percent of a thousand, thirty? And on an average night would go to the Mikva. Call it fifty, but that's still, that uh that's still a lot.
Is it a membership situation? Or can um? Someone who's not a member. Utilize the Mikva. And pay the same fee?
Oh, here's a little bit of background on that. The answer to that should be you do not need to pay membership. You would make your, you would give a contribution. I don't think it sticks. I can tell you that uh for the. Thirty-five, forty, thirty-five years that my wife used the Mikva. I think her standard donation on monthly basis was thirty-six dollars, two times five, if you will, if that's familiar to the audience. So that would be our donation and the donation is basically used to upkeep. The the Mikva was on, I think it's still there, the corner of Maple Leaf Road and Maple Avenue. Is is the old Mikva of Muncie and then the new one was built on Viola Road. Um, that's where most of the people go now to use it. Uh, and that, but that's also a not, to my knowledge, it's not-for-profit. They ask for donations. I personally received in the mail. Probably twenty-five years ago when it was being built. They asked for donations for the Mikva, I'm sure that I gave because uh that's typically what we do. I'll add something else that may be not common to this audience. The importance of of a, of an, of wom- of Jewish women going to the Mikva is so important that they don't. They don't want to have women be able to say very easily, I went to the other Mikva. So all the Mikvos typically are built under the uh a single heading of the Muncie Mikva organization, if if that's correct. New Square may be different. I'm not sure. I don't think New Square is uh is part of that single organization. But I have, we have a local Mikva in Armont in our synagogue, Kahal Teflon Mordechai on Darby Road. And that Mikva is closed during the week on purpose. You can't use that Mikva. Saturday night through Thursday night. You can only use it on Friday night. It's walk-ins only. And that's the basic reason is because the Muncie Mikva Association wants to make sure that all the women attend. And they can't say, I went somewhere else. It wouldn't be a good thing for them to be able to do that. So um they're typically under one umbrella. I can't say they, but typically they're under one umbrella. And the local Mikvos that we have are Friday night only Mikvos. On Viola Road, which is fairly large, a structure. The one on Maple Leaf Road is um not very large. Historically been a seven nights a week Mikva. This new one on Hillside Avenue, it looks like it could be large enough and, you know, to be used seven nights a week. I'm going to assume that it's gonna be used seven nights a week. But even if it was used seven nights a week, only three percent of the women population would be using it on any given night of the month. So again, the numbers, if you had a thousand women in the neighborhood that needed such a Mikva that didn't go to Viola Road or Maple Leaf Road or any of the other ones. That are open, a thousand women, only thirty on the average night would be using the Mikva. It's not a big, it's not a big amount.
So anticipating somewhere between forty and forty-five people attending per night, except for Fridays, which is gonna be less than that.
There are some attendance as well. I mean, maybe they include the attendance. There's people that run the Mikva while the women are using it, making sure that. Um, things are running smoothly, the bathrooms are clean, right? The women come there, they typically take it, they take their, they either take a shower or bath perhaps. While they're there, um, I don't know if they get their nails on there. They get their nails undone, things there. But you know, there are other people there. Could be that maybe if on any given night out of a thousand women, thirty had to show up to use the Mikva. But you need another five perhaps that run the Mikva during, you know, during the evening hours while they're there. So it's not like it's just those thirty and nobody else. They go and come on their own. There's always a few women on on staff. No men for sure, I guarantee that. Um, but there are a couple of women on staff that make it all run properly. In fact.
So you've never, you've never seen a situation where. They would charge a different rate for someone who comes every single month. Versus someone who. I don't know, is coming from Long Island, using it once. On a given um week. Nothing like that.
I would not expect the price to change whether you're local or you're long distance.
So it's not a membership? Or, yeah, it's not a membership.
It's based on donation. Um, when you come, you leave a donation to help in the up. But I don't think, and it's certainly, it's never been my experience that they ma- they demand a minimum fee. It was always whatever you left, you know, whatever check you gave them. And again, my wife used to give them thirty-six dollars walking in the, you know, walking in the door. That was a donation of thirty-six dollars. It wasn't a required payment of thirty-six dollars. If you couldn't afford it, you left ten dollars behind. Maybe some people left a hundred for all I know, but it's it's not fixed. It wasn't fixed in my experience and in my wife's experience.
Excellent. Okay.
It doesn't mean they shouldn't adhere to zoning laws and safety laws and.
No, 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 not.
Now I know all about Mikvos. Thank you there, Joel.
What people realize is the three percent rule. Uh, for a thousand women in a given locale, only, only three percent will be using the Mikva on any given night of the month, just plain math.
But it depends on the number of. Nights that it's open.
I'm assuming thirty nights a month. That it's a woman, uh Jewish women need the Mikva every, I mean, it depends when, I mean, it it's it's a little bit complicated. Basically, when the woman stops menstruating, they have to wait seven to eleven clean days. Where they check themselves to make sure that they're not still menstruating. But that that seven or eleventh day could be any day of the month. So on any given day of the month, the last day of their clean days is the day they go to the Mikva. It's not a very specific day. It's different for every woman based on when they get their period. And when they stop and and when they, and when it's all, when it's done, within a usually a seven to eleven day period. So, you know, it it's a rotating thirty days. On any given night of the month, I would expect three percent of the, of the. Nearby Jewish population to use the Mikva, the women's Mikva.
Okay. At the next meeting, Joel. Uh, I would like a lesson on why chicken is considered to be a meat. Under Halakha.
No problem.
Don't, don't say no problem. I have many um. Interesting um. Rebutts that uh. I can come up with.
I imagine you can, but uh I can try to address it. I I don't know that I have every answer. I studied in Hebrew school for a number of years. I'm not sure if you can, the uh the picture behind me, it's actually a picture of my bookcase. But most of those gold embossed volumes are Calm with volume, seventy-three of them. And I've gone through it a couple of times in my life. I'm no expert and I'm no rabbi. But through osmosis, I've covered most of the topics that uh that make Judaism, you know, uh, you know, uh, a great. You know, a great uh environment to to live in and to raise your children, a family in. So I can do my best to answer your question. I can also say, if I don't have an answer, I'll be happy to do homework. I like homework.
Okay, here's your homework.
Very helpful. Thanks.
I learned something. Thank you.
Apologize that sometime I give a long answer to a short question and I apologize.
No, this is, this is very helpful. And uh I think I could speak for everyone here. We wanna learn. But um. I have asked hundreds of rabbis about this chicken question. I mean. I I I wish I could have asked Schneerson. Uh, I don't. Maybe, maybe he could have come up with. Uh, the correct answer. That would have, that would have convinced me.
I'll give you the fifteen second version, if I may. You know, we're not allowed to eat milk and meat together. We don't eat cheeseburgers, right? That's pretty well known.
But but chicken, chicken do not uh uh produce milk.
That's correct. So what ends up happening is the rabbis in their, in their recognition of human nature. Was such that they felt that if they allowed mi- chicken, if they, they allow chicken and milk to be eaten together. Someone might come to make a mistake and actually milk, meat and milk together. So to guard us and protect us from not making that mistake, they, the rabbis had a tendency over the last few thousand years. To enact more stringent rules than necessary just to protect the biblical rules. So the rabbinical rules are there to protect the biblical rules. And sometimes we don't necessarily understand them completely, but that's the thirty-second version of why we don't eat. Chicken and milk together, even though biblically it's permitted. Here's another lesson for the night.
Okay. Maybe we should.
I need a, I I need a better one.
I'll, I'll work on it. Like I said, I like homework.
I'll, I'll put together a memo. Uh, we'll discuss it at the CDRC Eve. And then we'll circulate it to uh the board that day and send it over to the town of Ramapo.
Sounds good, Valerie. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, so I need.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
I was gonna make a motion to adjourn if we have nothing else. No other lessons for tonight, Dan?
No, I think we've, we've.
I think we learned enough for tonight.
Okay, who wants to second it?
Thank you, Joel.
Thank you, Joe. All in favor? Thanks, everyone. Have a good one.
Thank you.